I'd like to call to order the Springville Board of Education meeting for May 12, 2016. Roll call please.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Here.
Bab?
Here.
Flanget?
Here.
Lund?
Here.
And thereby rise for the plan.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was wonderful, Ken.
Yeah.
You're too fast.
We're slower.
1.2, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion? So, second?
Second.
Roll call.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab? Flanget?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
1.3, approval of April 28, 2016 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Second.
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 Roll call.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bab?
Yes.
Flanget?
Flanget.
Lund?
Yes.
I wasn't included. Yeah, now I'm getting watched in, I'm sorry.
Public participation and introduction of guests. Springville Education Association, 2.1, anybody? 2.2, Springville classified employees. Public participation, pre-arranged, I don't believe there was. Public participation, anybody want to say anything on any agenda item? 2.5, volunteer appreciation.
I'll go ahead and just start in, and Mrs. Bab wants to say some things as well. We just came through Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week, but we did want to take some time here at this board meeting to thank some of our parent volunteers. As you know, we have over 1,500 parent volunteers in our database, and that means those folks that have done those background checks and have registered with our central office. I don't think people realize how many people do sign up and do come into our schools for various activities throughout the year. We want to recognize tonight a very special group of people, and that is our District Parent Council. I think when you start off as a parent volunteer, as I also did, you come into the building because of your child, but you end up staying because of all the kids. And you end up giving so much of your time because of all of them. District Parent Council really exemplifies that because these ladies have given their time, and when they come in, they're representing their family, yes, but they're representing their school. And they put themselves out there willingly, almost like student council reps or something like that, because they go ahead and they share their contact information so that other parents can talk with them. And then they can bring their concerns to the administration. We have a wonderful cooperative working relationship with them, and you may know already that they created the Epic Award and put in a lot of hours reviewing. We had over 30 nominations this year. They put in a lot of time and thought and effort cutting together that award, reviewing the nominations, and then presenting the awards. That's one of my favorite days of the whole year, I don't know how you guys feel about it, but when we get to go to all the buildings and see the students and see their teachers and make those awards. So, we wanted to just thank them tonight. We have small tokens to thank them. Mrs. Bab, you're our board rep on DPC, so I didn't know if you wanted to say a few things.
Sure, sure. I started off on DPC as a parent, which was a really cool experience because I was able to see the parent's perspective of how administration really does count on DPC. And I think that that's something that Mr. Petrie, when he came in, he really valued the input of the community. So, there's been different things that he set up because he wants to not just look at the administration and ask them what they want, but he wants to ask the community what he wants. And the DPC has done a fabulous job, it's an eye on it as a board rep, but I've seen the group this year, and you guys have done a fabulous job of really representing the community. And I think that it's cool because those of you that are on it, like Mrs. Rossette, have really been open with getting your information out there and really getting the pulse of the buildings that you represent. So, I appreciate that, your willingness to do that, because we really do listen to what you say and take your input into account with different decisions that we're making. So, thank you for all the time that you've put into, it's a big commitment being on DPC, so we appreciate it.
We have, actually, I think it's only three of the 12 members that are here right now, so if I could have you guys come on. Flora Kovacs, Elizabeth Kirk, and Jenny Madge. Anything else to take them, it's nothing. If you could go over by Mr. Petrie, and we'll take a quick picture as well. Four members, would you guys like to come on up? Come on up. Okay, it's not a would you.
That was a directive, not as opposed to. What's that? You're good.
I don't like this.
We know each other. Take a couple of quick pictures.
Karen usually crops me out anyway.
Thank you very much.
2.6, Rachel's Challenge Presentation, Clear Creek Elementary, Ms. Johnson. I think it might have gone to sleep.
All right, so I'm Jen Johnson with the principal at Clear Creek, and I have lots of wonderful friends here to help me tonight. A few years back, it's been a while now, we started something called our Panther Powwows at Clear Creek, and they've become quite a tradition at Clear Creek. And so, when we heard about Rachel's Challenge, we were really excited because we were already doing a lot of the things that Rachel's Challenge instilled in our students through our Panther Powwow. So, it was very easy for us to weave in Rachel's Challenge to our Powwows. And so, tonight, these friends are going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we've done as part of Rachel's Challenge.
At Clear Creek, we have five Panther Promises. Caring, respect, responsibility, trust, make a difference.
Just like our promises, Rachel taught us that we just start a chain reaction with just a little kindness.
Kindness is caring about others.
Kindness is helping a friend.
Kindness is listening to our teacher.
I just turned around. So, this, the picture that you're looking at right now is our chain reaction that we did. So, we created every child in Clear Creek and every adult in Clear Creek made a chain, and then we put it together, and it's now hanging in our cafeteria as our chain reaction of kindness.
One place to start a chain reaction is on a playground. Take a look at our buddy bench.
All right, so one of the other things that came out of Rachel's Challenge was our buddy bench. So, one of my teachers actually said, whoops, click on buddy bench. Created this video for us.
Welcome to the Buddy Bench Project.
Welcome to Clear Creek, we have five Panther Promises.
Caring, responsibility, respect, um, trust, make a difference.
You show you care about others when you ask others to play. We're making a difference when we make someone happy by helping them to feel included during our recess time. So, what is a buddy bench? Well...
Buddy benches are all over the world.
They go in all shapes and sizes.
If you feel like you need a friend...
Find a buddy bench and sit down.
Here's how you can help. If you see a friend who's sitting on the buddy bench, invite them to play. I bet you two will have a lot of fun together. Every once in a while, friends don't feel like playing, they just want to talk and walk. So, invite a friend to go on a walk so they have somebody to talk to. Sometimes there are two lonely friends sitting on a bench. One lonely friend plus another lonely friend equals two happy friends when they invite each other to play. And one last thing, remember, the bench is not for resting, but it is for making new friends and making a difference at Clear Creek Elementary School.
When you go up to the room, it would be best to hold hands and stick together.
The next time you're on the playground, be on the lookout for the buddy bench in a new way to make a difference.
All right, so with the help of the Metro family who owns lots of Domino's in the area, they actually donated those benches out of Domino's that they were remodeling. And so, very soon, very soon, we're going to have our buddy bench out on the playground for students to use. So, that's one thing that came out of Rachel's Challenge for us.
Another way to start a chain reaction is to make a difference for others.
And so, at this month's Powwow, we decided to make a difference on the Clear Creek that at Springville Elementary across the street. So, over this week and part of next week, students have been going over to SI cleaning up their front bed and planting flowers. And we've also been planting flowers, some of our preschoolers back by their new space on the preschool back there. And all of our flowers that you see in these pictures were donated by Stephen Thaler's Nursery, so we got all of those, they're ready for us to plant. Now, they are again at SI.
We hope you will help us to keep our chain reaction building.
Great job. All right, I want my friends to thank you.
My name is Sophia, and I go to kindergarten.
My name is Sophie, and I go to freshman.
My name is Lacy, and I go to...
My name is Jackson, and I go to freshman.
My name is Tristan, and I go to kindergarten.
My name is Ariana, and I go to kindergarten.
My name is Sally, and I go to kindergarten.
Thank you very much. If, uh, parents, you can stay if you want for this exciting meeting we're going to have. Otherwise, if you'd like to leave, we'll give you a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Yep.
Okay, so do I need to sign in on my, um, sign in on the computer over there so I can pull up my thing, so I can pull it up on this?
That's...
Okay, and then there's no, can I have the podium, or is it too hard to get over there?
No, it's fine. Just roll with it.
Is that a buddy bench?
Baby, you missed the video. We got a buddy bench. Thought you might be sitting there being... That's right. She needed intervention, buddy bench.
May I? Thank you. Thank you. I got a little turned around, wasn't exactly sure, but thank you.
Would you like to say something before you... Yeah, there's, you could just... Moving on to our work session, as we go through the work session, after each item, if you have any questions, you can ask the questions in, and we'll try to get an answer for you. 3.1. Oh, yeah, you're getting ready. Okay, gotcha. 3.2, committee reports, yeah. We had policy committee this week, and Norm from Neola, that's our policy provider, he was present. We did all of the updates. And, uh, I've done a lot of updates. So, you, this time, when we pass those out, we didn't have them here tonight, but for the next board meeting, we will have a memo that goes with the updates to explain each of the updates. Because some of those are brand new policies, some are adjustments, some are reworked. So, we'll have a memorandum that goes with those to give you more of an update. Probably more information than you'll ever need, but it's really good information, because some of those policies are new. Also, we had budget finance a couple of weeks ago, started looking at the five-year forecast, which Tara is going to go over tonight, Ms. Floyd, our treasurer. And then we also had the safety committee, which was extremely well attended, I must say. I was back in the meeting, I won't cut up on, what in the world meetings going on in there? It was packed. So, Mr. Fennell's turned into a social butterfly, now even has large committee meetings. So, John, did you want to talk about the committee meeting? Give a, yes, sir? Safety committee. Safety committee, so, um, the, the, we had a really good crowd at the safety committee meeting. It was really nice because it was a lot better than just having a couple of us talking, talking with a single board member the last time. But we had several parents, a couple of board members, Jamie and Lisa were there, and we had Sergeant Wilson and, uh, Mrs. Griffin, Mrs. Coulter, Mrs. DeRosa were there. But basically, the minutes are online, so if anybody's interested in going, if you go to the superintendent's webpage, go to the committee reports, it's on there on that date. But basically, it was really nice to be able to talk about the situations that we had had recently. We had a really good discussion about, you know, what some of their concerns are and about the possibility of doing other things. Do we change some things? Do we look at doing some other things? And then we talked about how we decide what appropriate actions we take and how we go about that. And then we talked about some of the additional things that we'll be doing for, to increase safety, the additional card readers, the iPhones at the doors for Dennis and Five Point, some additional camera things. We had a really good discussion about the temporary locking devices that were just approved last month by the state fire marshal, the building code section of that. And that's going to be more of a long-term type of situation where we're going to, you know, we don't want to make a wholesale buy like some of the other districts have done for the same thing for every door. We're going to go, we're going to look at each individual door, see what works for those doors, and then how we change the behaviors, you know? What do we need to do to get kids out of the thing about making some of these threats and then not, what the ramifications for those are. So, it was a good, a very good discussion, and it was really nice to have a lot of people there and offer a lot of good opinions and take into some things and present some things that, you know, we would not think about ourselves all the time because we're so close to it, so. Thank you, John. I don't think there's any other committee that they...
I'd like to say, Mr. Fennell did a great job to be open to suggestions from the community and board members with that, because, you know, he clearly has his ideas coming in. I think he did a great job of, because we all hear what the community is saying, and so we were bringing some of those concerns. So, I appreciate them, and you and I hadn't yet, but I appreciate that you were open to, you know, people come to meetings, they want to know that you don't just have your way, and so we're just sitting there, and you were very open to it. So, I appreciate you being open to other ideas.
Thank you. Okay. 3.3, Tara, five-year forecast.
If anybody else wants a packet, I have what I'm going through up here, if you guys want. Do you guys have the, you have that, you have the, do you have the same thing?
No, the ocean.
Okay, good. If anyone else wants a copy, there's other copies up here. So, what I'll do is I'll go through it, but what I kind of did was I'm going to go through the actual presentation, which you guys have as well, but then there's some notes with it that'll kind of help maybe explain it in a little more simple terms of exactly what I'm trying to say when I go through the actual presentation. So, if you have any questions as I'm going, just stop me, and then that way, you know, that way you don't have to wait till I'm done. Looks a little, but okay, like? Yeah, I wish, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, this is the forecast update. So, basically, in October, you have the original forecast, and then in May, it's the update to the forecast, which kind of explains what's changed since the October forecast was put into place. So, I'm going to go through some overall things, but then also some changes from the October forecast to May. So, we'll, we can start at page three, this is just the table. So, yeah, right there. So, on the notes that are the separate packet, we're going to start, and each one will have a page number that we're on and kind of the main topics that I'll go through. So, as I'm rambling, these are the main topics that we kind of want to get through from it, so I'll hit on those first. Basically, if you can see the yellow line that's on the packet here, you can also see it up here, but it's on your line on page three, there is a yellow line, and that basically shows that our revenue deficit. So, basically, we have a revenue shortfall in each one of the five years of the forecast. That basically means that we are spending more than we're bringing in. So, as that increases yearly as well, you can kind of see what it does to the cash balance. So, right now, for this fiscal year, we're anticipating a $610,000 deficit in revenue. So, what that basically means is that each time we have a revenue deficit, we are dipping into our cash reserves. So, eventually, over time, our cash reserves will be gone, and then we will be operating in the red. So, and I'll be able to show you, so basically, you can see on the forecast, the ending balance for this year, although we're in the positive $7,757,000, we've had to dip into our reserve $610,000. So, each year, that makes our cash balance lower and lower. As our revenue deficit gets larger, our cash balance shrinks. So, by 2020, we're anticipating being actually in the red. So, does that make sense? Okay, before I go on on that one. So, that's one of the main things that I want to point out, and another one of the main things that I want to point out on this as well, is that amount of money that we're at a revenue deficit, that's with us getting the renewal money in. So, if you see online under proposed new levies, that's not a new levy, that's actually our renewal levy that we already have going on. But because it expires December 31 of 18, we have to show that as a new revenue if it is renewed in that year. So, even with the renewal levy, which is an $8 million levy a year, but we only received half of that in in 19 because it expires during that fiscal year. So, you would receive $4 million in for that renewal in 19, and then the full $8 million in in 20. So, I guess it's important to really see this and know what this means. This basically means with the revenue that we have currently and that we anticipate hoping to have renewed, we are still running a deficit in our revenue versus expenditures. So, that's really important to know, because that just basically means eventually we're going to need new money, because even with the money that we currently have, it is not fulfilling the needs of the expenditures of the district. So, that's important. I also want to say on this piece, before we go on, is this forecast that I'm presenting tonight, I want to be clear that it is not all-encompassing. It is not by any means all-encompassing of what we need in this district. But we have allocated what we can within the resources we have available, we have allocated as much as we can within this forecast. So, we do still have a large number of unmet needs that we are not able to put in this forecast because there's simply not enough revenue to support those needs. And I want to be clear on that, too. Okay, you can go on to the next page. So, page four, for the revenue overview, you can see that we're anticipating increasing an overall annual amount of 2.72. So, you can see all of the different lines of in each category where we're anticipating in that year going up or down. That's not necessarily dollars, that's just percentages based off of the prior year's revenue, is it up or down versus what the last year was. So, that, you can see, that's 2.72, and then our expenses, when we get to that part, we're increasing our expenditures by about 3.7, 3.07%. So, we're obviously, same thing, we're not getting in as much revenue as we are having expenditures go out. So, that's important. Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, page five, our property tax. This is kind of one of the things that has helped a little bit, which makes this forecast look a little better than it would have if this did not happen. But, um, can you scroll down on just the bottom part a little bit, I think? Yeah, right here. Okay, so in, we, there's what's called a triennial update, and every three years, the auditor goes through and they analyze exactly what everybody's values are. And then based off of that, they will submit to the school districts, how much your value increased or decreased. Well, since 2008, and we had the recession, a lot of, a lot of districts in the state decreased substantially because of that recession. They, they lost a lot. So, basically, when you would go to sell a house, you couldn't get near what you paid for it if you bought it during that time, because after that, everything went a lot lower, and you couldn't get as much for your, you know, that you paid for it. So, basically, in analyzing what was going on and how this district, as well as other districts in our area, have been responding to that recession, we actually didn't really hurt too bad. Going, only going down 3.1% for the first triennial update after the recession happened in 2008, that actually is not that big of a drop. Some, some districts lost 30%, went down 30%. So, for us to only go down 3.1, that kind of gave us a very good indication of, okay, so this didn't really, we weren't really affected that much. So, basically, for October, the October forecast, I assumed for the 2015 triennial update, as well as the 18 triennial update, I had a 6% growth in there. I was a little concerned at the time that that might be aggressive, since the last one I had to look forward to was a negative 3.1, but it actually ended up coming in at the end of the day at a positive 10.1 versus the 6% I had projected in October. So, because of that, that gave us a large amount of extra revenue for the next, and I shouldn't say just for the next, you know, several fiscal years, but I also then am able to take the 18 renewal and assume that we will likely get the same sort of increase. It could be more, it could, it's very likely that it'll, unlikely that it will be less, because we're on a trend of our values have been increasing every single year since that post-recession period. So, it's likely that they will come in at that, you know, I've heard 12, 13, but I, I think I feel safe with the 10, because that's what we've seen so far. And then I can watch that as we move on, and if it looks like it might be a little bit more. The bad part about it is, is they don't give us those numbers until December. So, when I do the October forecast, I have no way of knowing what we're looking at for tax increases. So, it's where you have to put in what you think might happen, and then sometime in December, January at the latest, we'll get the final numbers, and then that's when we're able to say, oh, okay, and then adjust for the May forecast. So, this is what I'm doing now, I've adjusted for the May forecast to add that extra revenue in. And there isn't, that resulted, you can see on page five, or actually, it says page five here under my tutorial, it's an additional $2.8 million in revenue that that added throughout the forecast. So, that really helped us, especially when we had a lot of expenses that you'll hear here in a few minutes, that we have added to the forecast since October as well. So, that's important, I think, that will help show how we've been able to afford some of these things, and our numbers haven't, haven't gone too much out of whack from October forecast. So, the next one is page six, public utility. This actually didn't fluctuate too much, we don't really need to spend too much time on this. The public utility is based off of our full voted village, so, which was 52, 51.25. So, because this is based off of that, we don't, it doesn't matter if our values really increase, because we're using it, there's a reduction method for property tax. Well, if you're getting it off the full voted, then you're not really getting any more regardless of values go up or not. So, that's why this has stayed very stable, it's just slightly moved. One of the main factors, I think, in public utility, that's important to know, is that I don't think we're going to be getting that extra money for the second pipeline. We had a meeting a few months ago with the county auditor, and they pretty much told us, I don't think anyone's going to want to touch this issue right now, because it will make the oil companies pretty angry, because I think they've kind of anticipated not having to pay taxes on this revenue. And because of the material that's going through these lines, they anticipate that we're probably not anytime soon, if ever, going to realize any revenue from that second pipeline. So, I think that's a little frustrating. I think it was sold to not only the community by these oil companies as their yards were dug up... as their yards were dug up and everything else. I think it was sold to them that this is gonna bring jobs, this is gonna bring money into your schools and all of your other things. So I think that's a little frustrating because I'm not, I'm, it's not looking like that's gonna happen. So I'm sure that that's gonna be out there here pretty soon, being talked about.
So, just, and there again, not to rehash it because we've talked this to death over the years, but in light of your five-year forecast in 2016, I attended board meetings in 2013 where, you know, the belief was that this, this revenue was gonna be coming to Springboro Schools.
Yes.
And there were, there were a lot of people who said, well, you're really, it's one of those things where you don't count, count your chickens.
Yeah, it was, it was.
It had turned out that way.
Yeah, and I'm glad that we removed it because it was in the forecast when I first started here. There was a revenue stream in the forecast for that to be afforded. And the talks at the time, you know, it did look like it was really coming. So, you know, I took it out and pushed it back. Actually, I pushed it back a few times first before I took it out because the talks were still going on, but it just didn't feel right. It didn't feel like anyone would wanna give any really strict answers, even when you called the state. So I just felt, you know, until we have something solid, I don't think it should be in there.
Wasn't that like $400,000 a year?
It was about a half a million, yes.
Half a million, that's significant. Over five years, that's $2 million.
Yes.
It's a lot of money.
And so, as he said, it's like you don't wanna count on the money till you get it. So we kind of pushed it out into years. Cause I think when I first started here, it was in there, gonna be starting to get the second half of that very next year. And as, so we kind of pushed it out and then eventually just took it out because we just didn't have any basis to really have it in there with any validity. So we just took it out. So if that, any, I mean, we're, it's not that we're just forgetting about it. We're still trying, you know? I know the county auditor at his quarterly meetings, he tries to bring it up and see if they can start to get something going. But so far, nobody wants to touch it. So unfortunately, we have it out for now. The next page, the unrestricted grants and aids. Well, we don't have an income tax, so we're gonna skip that page. Unrestricted grants and aids. This is basically our state foundation. So our state foundation, I had to decrease from the October forecast to the May forecast by close to $1 million. The reason for that is part of the state funding calculation on how they fund schools is based off of your property values. So even though it's awesome that we got this extra money with the 10.1% triennial update and since the valuation is a piece of the calculation, as we get wealthier from local, you know, because we got the extra tax revenue from the local, the state then in turn lowers our state foundation so that it doesn't, you know, so that we don't get it both places. Cause your, your revenue only totals 100%, so it's either coming from the state sources or the local sources. So as your local sources increase, your state sources decrease. So I've had to adjust the state side in relation to the extra revenue we got on the property tax side. So that's the change in that. There's some other numbers in here that you guys can look at too. I don't, I don't wanna bore you with all of them, but I did try to put as much numbers in as I could to kind of give you an idea of, basically, for instance, if you scroll down just a tad, one of the numbers that's important is our, right now, oops, right there. You, you got it. So the state funding, the full funding formula right now is 5,900. So of that 5,900, our district is only receiving 2,305 this year per student. Then as you can see, by 2020, we're going to be receiving about 2,0146 per student. So our actual state funding from the state's going to be lower as part of that calculation. As we get wealthier, the state gives us less per pupil. Does that make sense?
Doesn't make sense.
Exactly. It's like, it's not good, but yeah, makes sense. Okay, the next page, this is actually something that I wanna say thank you to these two right here. Kim and Lee have done some awesome stuff with this. The restricted grants and aid is basically the biggest piece of this, is our catastrophic cost reimbursement. We had, we had, in, back in '14, I think we got 5,900, or 59,000, yeah, 59,000. And then I started looking into all these expenses and I got with them and we talked about what we can be reimbursed for and everything. We went through this big process and we got about 268,000. I wrote it down here, but about 268,000 in reimbursement from the state. So basically what that is, is they take a calculation of your total special ed costs for each individual student. So you do it by individual student. And if it goes over a threshold, then you can submit to the state anything over that threshold. And then the state, usually typically around 50% of whatever the overage is over the threshold, they'll give you as a reimbursement. It is based off of a pool amount. So it, it, you know, the more people who submit, the less each district will get. So that's why you don't have an exact number until they're all the way done. You don't have an exact number of how much you're gonna get back. But they did submit this, you know, they gave me all this stuff. It was awesome. And after we got it all uploaded and everything, we submitted well over a million dollars worth of stuff this year. Which if we get 50% like we got last year, we're looking at about a half a million. Not being sure for sure exactly what the percentage that we're going to receive back, I actually only added 400,000 more to the forecast for each year. Actually, I didn't add more. We had 250 in there, so I added the difference for each year, which has increased this line item substantially, which is also what's added additional revenue. But that is a ton of work. They brought me down a stack probably this high that we got to scan and calculate everything. But I mean, it was, it was awesome. It was a lot of work, so I thank you very much because that was a lot of district dollars that have been saved basically because we're receiving those back, so.
I just wanna ask, so how much time did it take you guys to do that?
So much time. And, and I have to tell you, it's our staff too. Because now we have a system in place, we have forms that they fill out every year for us, so we are, we are preempting the process.
You're figuring out how to streamline it?
Yes, and our staff has done an awesome job of this.
Isn't it impressive not done it and just, I mean, to think about all that money now that we could potentially have back in to the district? I appreciate that.
Yeah.
No, right.
Yeah, keep it on the down low.
Yeah, that drives down the, the amount that you get.
Our administrative assistants, cause she looks up all the transportation costs, the aid costs and, and everything. So it's, it's all inclusive.
Yeah. It's really nice. So that is a big plus. That's really helped out as well. It's actually, that added 750,000 to the forecast just from the additional money that we, we should probably be receiving. Cause our special ed costs increase each year. So you should be able to relatively assume, as long as they keep this program in order, that we will receive that revenue each year. So now I'm on property tax allocation. That is our rollback in Homestead. So again, this also is part of the calculation that as our tax valuation increased, the amount that we get for state reimbursement, that, which is the 10% and the 2.5%, the credits that the state gives us. Now, they did do away with this in 2013, in August of 2013. However, it's only on new levies from now forward. You do not receive the rollback in Homestead credit. However, if you have an ongoing or, you know, renewal or if you have a levy that's already in place, then it stays, the credit stays. So that credit has also increased because our values increased. So the portion, the 10 and the 2.5% also increased respectively to our values increasing. So that's why you'll see a little bit of more revenue from May, or from October to May. And that's why the difference is, is because of the valuation increase. All right. All other, all other revenues, these don't really increase too much here and there. They're pretty stable. This is just for like excess costs, investments, school fees. That is gonna increase a little bit for us increasing school fees, but not enough for you to really notice. So that category stays pretty flat. All right. Total financing sources, as you can see, there's really nothing. We, I put a placeholder in there each year. When I first started here, they did a lot of advancing to other accounts and it was just because the grants were not being, the money wasn't being requested timely for the grants. So what would happen is, is the grants cut off at a certain time and you cannot request any more money from the federal government. So what we were doing is advancing general fund money to the grant funds. And then once the next year came, they were able to ask for the money and give it back and then we'd have to move the money back. So I make sure that the process is different. So, and then there's also a couple other things that go into that account, but mainly it's that, so we won't have much of anything cause I don't, I always make sure it's requested in time. So that's pretty much on that. So now it's the expenditures. Now, as I said before, the 305, so 3.05% is our average yearly increase in our expenditures. So that, that was kind of important to know that obviously our revenues were not, they were at 2.72. So our expenses are increasing at a faster rate than our revenue is increasing, which is what I said before, that's why our revenue deficit keeps getting larger because our expenses are getting higher than our revenue is coming in. Okay, so for personnel services, the first one. All right. Okay, right now with personnel services, we have our current negotiated agreements in there, which is, bless you, which is fiscal '16, '17, and '18. So June 30th of 2018, our contracts expire with both classified and the certified unions. So currently in the forecast, we have a step and a two, two, three in there for our staff currently. And that's the three-year contracts that are in place. For '19 and '20 in our forecast, experiential steps are the only thing that is in the forecast. That's because those are in law. So unless the teachers forego them, they are automatically get the step. It's part of the statute, that they automatically get steps. So those are built into the forecast. What I think is important is for fiscal '19 and '20, there are no other increases for staff other than steps.
No base increases.
No base increases. So if anything were to occur during the negotiation process, that would change these numbers drastically. And unfortunately, because of rules, you're not allowed to just put things in there because it appears you're negotiating a public and you can get an unfair labor practice. So I just make sure that I explain the fact that those are not in the forecast, which will greatly change those numbers in FY '19 and '20 if anything happens during that negotiation process and any base increases are given.
But we do have estimated if they get the next level of education.
Yes. 90,000 a year is the average cost for, for staff moving laterally as they increase their education. That is in here and I do have that in my notes, I believe. I think it might be right on the, yeah, right there. Yeah, it's about a half a percent, so, which totals around $90,000. Did I miss anything that I wanted to say? Oh, there is, there is one thing I wanna say and this will kind of come up in our financial section when we have the, when you're approving the April finances. Our payroll has been trending down this whole year and I know I've talked about it every month. I did a lot of analysis on it and, but we've had is, we've had six, right now, we have six staff members who are either on a leave of absence this year or have left or resigned sometime after the school year started. So in the forecast, it's anticipated that those people's full salaries are in there. And then when they either resigned or went on a leave of absence, their, what is sub, so to speak, their long-term subs, the person that's covering for them is coming out of purchase service. But, so those costs are not being realized in the salary line because they're not employees. They're being used through the EFC. So what I wanna make sure is that you guys know is even though I've lowered the expenditures and I've adjusted the May forecast to be more in line with how we are actually going to end the school year, I have increased next school year as those employees, we've actually filled those positions with people who will be on staff. So it's been increased, even though I've lowered this year, it will be increased for next year, anticipating those people be, will be hired or the people on leave will be coming back.
But then the flip side, you would have lowered the purchase service.
Yes. And I have wrote that in here too, that I did lower the purchase service accordingly. Purchase services has been coming in lower this whole entire year anyway. Our sub costs are down, our utility costs are down even more than we anticipated, which is excellent. Our special ed costs are down a little bit, so that's good as well. So we've had other things that have actually lowered our purchase service accounts, but it'll definitely be lowered for that as well. The next section is benefits. These benefits have been lowered as well for the rest of this fiscal year because those are the, some of the difference in what we haven't spent is the associated benefits for those people who have been on leave or are not here. We're not paying benefits for them because they're either on leave of absence unpaid or they've resigned. So we're not paying those benefits. So that's 15.45% of their salary, which is for Medicare and retirement, as well as if they were on medical insurance and they're no longer taking the medical insurance. So I've actually lowered that too. Another thing to, to hit on is within this forecast, and it's, it was in the October forecast too, but I like to hit on it again, that we are anticipating about a million dollars in savings over the forecast period because the unions did agree to go to the HSA. And I know they've heard a little bit and I know that we're gonna be, you know, having to kind of constantly, it's a new thing, we're gonna, it's a learning process. And I know we're gonna have to look at it, maybe even tweak it at some point in the future, but it, it is anticipated to have about a million dollars in savings. So if we can keep making it work somehow, even if we have to make tweaks, I think it would be beneficial financially. The next one is purchase service. This is where I'll be able to kind of explain a few of the overages that we're looking at. And one of the things I wanna hit on, especially after talking with Andrea today and she's not here, we got some, a little bit better numbers, which made me wanna put this in here even more. So basically, a purchase service is only about 15% of our entire budget, but it does seem like it's high dollars because there's things that can fluctuate so much within this category. The college credit plus, it is a year in arrears. So next fiscal year, we will be being charged for the costs that occurred this fiscal year. So this fiscal year, we're coming in right around the 250. It's about 230 right now, but we haven't gotten all the book, textbook purchases. So I'm not positive about how much those are gonna be, but it's still gonna be under 250, which was what I projected that it was gonna cost. So for next fiscal year, we're in line for that 250 number. However, Andrea had given me some numbers today and she had let me know that we had 115 students participate in CCP this school year. So that's the 250 we're gonna be charged for next school year is the 115 students this year. Well, they've got preliminary numbers and they have 278 people that have filled out paperwork that would like to do CCP. They're anticipating possibly 225 of them actually participating. So that's a, quite a bit of a jump from the 115 that we are anticipating is costing us 250. Now, there can be some other variances. Obviously, a lot of those kids may not end up following through or may not, you know, when they go to do placement, they may not place. We don't know. But that's a huge jump. So right now, I have 300,000 in the forecast for each year. We're gonna have to really watch it. There could be 278 kids that wanna take one class. I might have 50 kids that take six classes. So the number of students doesn't necessarily tell you how much, how much it's gonna cost because we might have a bunch of students who only wanna take one or two classes, whereas we might have, you know, 20 students taking five classes.
Could you clarify if anyone watched what CCP is?
College credit plus.
That's where we have used tax dollars to pay high school students to go to college?
It is an unfunded mandate that the governor passed in the last financial budget that requires school districts to pay for college classes for anybody that lives within their school district and their associated textbooks. Up until this last quarter, we weren't even allowed to bill any student that did not pass a course. But they since have put in this as if someone doesn't pass, we can at least go back for them for the tuition and books for that. It's a huge expense. There's also something going through legislation right now where they're trying to stop districts from being able to possibly negotiate a lower price because some of these colleges have came out and said, hey, we know this is a big burden on school districts. We can't, we are willing to not charge the school district's tuition or we'll give you a lower rate, lower than the floor. And they're trying to stop that because they think then all of the, you know, the colleges will be fighting and everything. And so they're trying to stop that. So I know earlier this week, I signed, I think I put something in your box to sign, we're signing a petition that... put something in your box to sign, we're signing a petition that will go before the House to speak our displeasure on it, that hey, if we can get this cheaper, why are you not letting us? You've already not given us any additional revenue, and you're forcing us to an unfunded mandate to make our, basically taxpayers, pay for these people's college, and you're not even allowing us to, to negotiate a lower rate? Why? That doesn't make any sense. So that's another thing that we'll also be looking at, so maybe that'll help curb some expenses if that can be possible.
I don't know if you've had any update, but pay to participate for athletics?
Yes.
That is another huge push that they are trying to get through government, that school districts cannot do pay to participate. That, that would be about a $400,000 a year to our budget.
Well, I know when we went to the legislative conference, Mrs. Bab and I, we went, and they basically said in open forum that if school districts did not do something within the next couple of years to figure out how to absorb the cost of pay to participate, that they would do it for us. So basically, I think it's gonna put school districts in a bad spot that either says, we're not gonna have any sports, I mean, I don't know what other choice we really have, we're not gonna even be able to have any sports, or it's gonna cost, I mean, you're gonna be running levees for sports. I mean, that's, there's no, you know.
College credit plus and sports would be about a one million a year program.
Yeah. So I mean, I think, they, they say that their ideology behind it is that some kids aren't able to participate because they, they can't get it for free, and they, and they can't afford to pay for all of these sports, but the alternative is you're not gonna have any sports, so nobody's gonna be playing. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that's gonna make it better, but, but that is something also, within the next few years, that we're gonna probably be hearing something about as well. So, I mean, right now, we have 355,000 a year that, that the board is, is transferring over to the athletic department to help offset it, but it's an over million dollar program. So that's just the subsidy that the board has afforded to them to help them. But if they in turn say no pay to participate, then we're looking at the 355, and then at least another 750,000 to meet that a million dollar program. I mean, it's, that's, that would be devastating. So, so obviously, we would, you know, that would be a tough spot. So hopefully, something will change between now and then, but it's hard to say. Again, I did talk earlier about the people that we were using subs for, because the people that were on salary either resigned or were on leave. I did lower 280,000 from the purchase service section, now that those people are going to be back on staff. So that I did do. Let's see. Our open enrollment, this is a, this to me is a pretty big one. Our open enrollment in community schools has dropped considerably. We had, a few years ago, when I actually first arrived, I was shocked by the number of costs, and I'm sure it's high in a lot of areas, but it was one of the things that I was kind of surprised at how much they cost. And basically, I have some numbers here that show, in fiscal 14, we paid $400,000 for our resident kids going out to other schools to do open enrollment. For instance, Waynesville, Carlisle, Franklin, they do open enrollment.
Charter schools, private schools?
No, that one is community school. So this is just open enrollment. This is our students going to another public school through the way of open enrollment. Some of them might be following working parents, but when you actually look at the list, unless a whole bunch of people live or work in Franklin, Carlisle, and Waynesville, that's where most of them were going.
So do we have, I know, that's one of the things I noted when I was reviewing this ahead of time. Do we, can we attribute that to anything, to why we have that drop? I mean, it's a great thing, but why over the last years? To me, that's a pretty significant drop.
I mean, I have my personal opinion. I just feel that things are a lot, I think things are a lot better now. And I think that people want to be here a little more.
We're not getting any emails anymore that due to all the controversy and the district people pulling their kids out, so.
Yeah.
We don't have that issue anymore.
Our community schools has dropped a little bit, but the open enrollment going from 414 down to for this year is 256. That's 254, that's a great, that's a great drop. It just shows that I feel like things are
We're offering more STEM courses, and AP courses, and honor courses at our high school than we ever have. So a lot of those things together attract people.
I saw those numbers also.
Yeah, it's nice, which that also has afforded extra dollars in the forecast as well. We did add $100,000 for instructional coaches. I don't know if you want to hit on that at all, but that was added to the forecast.
Yeah. What that is, it's looking at, when we have 50% of our teachers who are brand new, professional development for them is essential. Instead of sending people out and paying for subs, which costs a lot more than that, to be able to go through the ESC to find some better teachers who are extremely skilled in the expertise of early literacy, so that they can go in and work right with some of our youngest teachers, to bring them up to where they need to be with the latest information possible. Because we're gonna look at educating each individual child, it takes quite the repertoire of skills for a teacher to be able to do that, to differentiate. And this year, through Title I funds, we're able to offer that at our sixth grade building. It has made a tremendous difference there in our assessments. And we have so many, even our veteran teachers who have started just retooling their classrooms, reworking the way that they do it, much more efficient, but addressing a greater amount of needs of our students. And what that will do in the long run is it reduces all of these extra people that you have to have, like reading specialists and things of that nature. Because the classroom teachers, they will do it on his or her own, which is really important. So there's a lot of information behind that. We're able to pilot that this year out of Title I funds. Next year, money pending. I mean, even though it's in that five year, doesn't fully mean that we're gonna do it, but at this point, that's, we're trying to make that happen. No guarantee on that, but we're trying to make that happen. But it's only in there for one year. It's not an ongoing expense.
And it's targeted at what age group?
It would be second, actually, it'd be K through five.
So K through five, so we piloted it at six, you're saying?
Right. At K through five, because the, the research shows the earlier you intervene with students, the less you need resource staff as the kids get older.
I think the teachers that I've talked to, and I've said, what is it that the district can be doing to help you? That's exactly what I'm hearing. It's just, it's hard when you're balancing, especially when you're doing all subjects. It's hard when you're getting all the different standards and knowing how to actually do it effectively. And it's somebody getting in there and helping you work through specific lessons. I just think this is a critical piece to really impactful teaching, but also figuring out how to differentiate with it. So I think this is a huge, huge
What we're seeing now at the high school level, four years ago, we did an efficiency plan. We reduced some, some areas to provide the money to hire resource reading intervention people at the earliest grades. But now, a lot of those kids are getting seventh, eighth, ninth grade. They were in the third, fourth, and fifth then. We're seeing a lot more kids in honors classes at our high school level when they're doing very well. So when we're able to strengthen those early literacy skills when they're in the elementary buildings, it makes a big difference on what they're capable of doing when they get to high school.
Are there quantitative, like, measures that we'll be able to sort of track? It's like state testing, those sorts of things, like, that we'll be able to sort of, it's hard to probably draw a direct percent correlation, but are there quantitative things we could look at to demonstrate the success of these?
There is. We have all kinds of data, but what we don't have is what's called a data warehouse that will really work that data. As the kids are here, I know at Jen's building and our early learning centers, our elementary buildings, we do data teams, and they keep composites of each child that they're working with. But we don't have anything that gives that long-term picture or calculation. So we've been looking at that pretty cautiously. We thought the state was gonna come out with something, but they didn't. So right now, it's Excel spreadsheets that our principals create.
But he saw, once he took some of the stuff from the high school and put in the reading at the elementary, we saw our state scores go from here to here. So we definitely saw that.
We're having conversations with the community. I mean, these are the types of things that when you make an investment, you see this sort of return in terms of our achievement. I'm just trying to.
Well, I think this year, we were one of three districts that had the highest jump in the region in early literacy testing. So it's paying off, but we've gotten to the point where it's not about state testing, it's about the everyday assessments that we do. Because we're finding when our kids do well on those, the state tests are secondary to some extent.
Well, I think, I was blown away at the, I'm glad you're here, Mr. Johnson, because we had a curriculum meeting in the fall, and the principals did this amazing presentation that showed as you were working through these data teams, and the jump that you would see in kids, how often, is it monthly or every six weeks?
Six weeks.
Every six weeks that you reassess them. So a kid might be getting the extra help for six weeks, but if they jump to a certain level, a new kid might be the one that needs the targeted, you know, the targeted help. So to see these kids making this progress where you are truly differentiating every six week who needs that, that's where you're seeing, we've got the data that's proving we are absolutely getting and targeting who we need at what level. So that's what this type of, you know, using our money in this way, that's, it supports it 100%, that we are seeing the impact of when we use our, our funds for that. So I think it's a great use of money.
Well, the issue is, and I'm not going to be avid with this, when we provide this training, teachers, they need to stay here. Because what happens is, is when teachers leave us, then we get new people in that need the training we already provided, which isn't expensive. And when you have 350 teachers, it's easy to rack up money real fast. So it's important that we are able to retain the people that we have once we invest this money in them. If we just invest the money in them, then they go for interviews in some of these other districts, they still wear top teachers. And that's, we're not as bad in that shape right now. But the first couple of years I was here, it was terrible. I mean, we would do this training, bam, they run the base. So it was very difficult. So that's, that's getting better. We have not seen many resignations at all this year, have we? Very few. Which means next year, we're gonna spend a whole lot less on substitute teachers and professional development.
Is something you said, the ESC, that's the coaches are providing?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. So yes, there, it is only in the forecast for the one year, but I mean.
Well, let me answer this, sorry, Taryn. The reason we go to the ESC is we don't have to pay health benefits or anything like that. We just pay an hourly rate to the ESC, so it's very costly to pay that way.
Pay for what you need.
And I know, Ms. Johnson, at the Early Learning Center, has actually gone through Hamilton County. The sixth grade building has gone through Warren County. It's funny, I didn't even know who they were hiring. The two teachers they hired were teachers in the building where I first taught. They used to come into my classroom and help me as a teacher. So they are just rock star teachers. So it's, it's worked out well.
Okay. The last thing for purchase service I wanted to just hit on briefly is, we are looking at a new bus lease. And I know John will probably be talking about that tonight, the new bus lease. It's only gonna be an increase for one year, and it's because in the previous forecasts, not Octobers, but the, the May before that, we had taken out a large sum of money for purchasing buses outright, because we just couldn't afford it, and we had to do other things that were more pressing. So in turn, we decided we were gonna just do another bus lease, which saved a ton of money from the five year at that point. So this is going to be starting for FY 17, there'll be a new bus lease. We have a bus lease that's ending fiscal year 18. So this bus lease will basically replace the one that's falling off in 18. There's just one year lapse of, we still owe the last year of the other one. So there'll only be an additional cost of 215,000. After that, it's just gonna replace the other one. So it won't be an additional cost. So when he talks about that tonight, it's not the whole cost, it's just basically one year we're overlapping, and we'll have to pay additional costs. For supplies and materials, this has changed a little bit. We did add, through budget and finance, we went ahead and added $100,000 for FY 17 for textbooks. I believe Science and Social Studies, I think, is their target for, for fiscal 17. But what we did also do is add 600,000 for fiscal 20. And that's because we already had 200,000 in there, but it's gonna cost at least 600,000 for them to renew the subscriptions of some things that we're currently using. And I'm not sure if you know exactly what those are, but we have this online text or
I mean, to really look at, in early, all back in 2012, 2013, 14, in the five year forecast, we had 600,000 for textbooks. But if you read the fine print in the notes, it, that 600,000 went from 600,000 for textbooks, oh yeah, by the way, you need to have your educational software in there as well. So even though out in the community, you saw we're buying textbooks for the first time, within the assumptions, that started getting connected together, which really what was happening in that budget was, was slashing the cost of textbooks. So for us to legitimately give you an idea of the actual expenses without saying, oh, let's just put this in there and add that there, it'll look good on the bottom line. We're telling you exactly what we're going to need. Unless, of course, we're gonna look at books that are 20 years old, and now we can't keep them because we have a whole new curriculum the kids have to learn. So we're put in a position where we have purchased new products. And we're looking at all digital products because they're about half the cost. So it's, and it's working out well, because kids love using these instead of carrying a big bag of books. Teachers, on the other hand, some of them like book, but the technology piece, kids are really enjoying. So it's worked out well.
Yeah. So we have added that.
On a scale of one to ten, the ask that you're, you're suggesting in this, where is that on a scale of one to ten?
Well, I can tell you this. Once we get social studies and science purchased, we've basically refurbished all of our textbooks in the district. The only thing I think that's left is like high school science, and we had the money in there this year. They just couldn't come to an agreement on what they wanted. The money was there. So what Tara has done is carried that, I think it was $60,000, over into this budget. So we'll basically be at a point at the end of next year to where we've really replaced everything, and then the years after that, we're gonna have to look at updating, like the contract for our Pearson books, I think it was Pearson.
Online subscriptions.
The subscriptions, where we had math, language arts, all those. So that's about $500,000. But that covers K through 12, language arts, math, and some foreign languages. So basically, we'll be starting the process over. So, I mean, four years ago, we started, and I know Mr. Johnson used to talk about this often, we had hardly even pushed and purchased a book in like five or six years. Four years later, we've revamped everything and still have money left in supporting staff. So it's working out well.
Another thing that we were able to do for next year is add $60,000 for two STEM labs that are gonna go in. And those are actually from savings from the textbook line item for this year, as well as the rest of that savings is going for next year for those books that they didn't purchase this year. So that was nice, some of the savings that they were able to use is actually gonna be, be able to provide those two STEM labs, which I know a lot of people are excited about those.
Well, we'll have the fee to sustain that.
Right. Well, the initial STEM labs will be purchased through that, but then the fees will be able to sustain the upkeep and supplies and stuff that they need.
The school fee will, so parents will see an increase in the school fee.
Yes, that's on my next line.
If they sustain these people purchasing instead of the general fund bank for everything.
And I did also add $100,000 through the forecast period for additional school supplies. So it's not once, it's the whole, by the end of the forecast, it'll be about additional 100,000. And they, and they range because the fees have changed. I don't, you would have to kind of hit on all the fees, because there's different fees for each thing, but like a $15 fee was added for some of the project lead the way, I believe, things. There was a paper fee, there was, there's a tech fee. There's some different fees that have been added to different grade levels and things. Try to make it more unified. Some were already charging it, some weren't. So we wanted it to be a more uniform, because it's being used at every building, some just weren't charging it. The next one for page 18 is capital outlay. We have, and I want to explain this a little bit better, because I didn't put it in my notes clearly, but I've added $100,000 for 17 through 20. You know, I talked to John about this. The hope is that possibly, we know that the turf field is going to be, needing to be replaced in around fiscal 19, 18 possibly, but hoping to stretch it out till 19. Well, we didn't really have the money to allocate the whole 500,000 that's anticipated that that's going to cost within the forecast. So what I did was at least added 100,000 for 17 through 20, even though we're gonna need to purchase it before fiscal 20. We're hoping to maybe do some sort of a lease purchase, that's a short-term lease purchase, and do 100,000 a year so that we can at least stretch that out. And, and if for some reason we can't, and we have to pay for it all at once by the year that we're going to, then we'll only have an extra 200,000 that we'll have to come up with, which hopefully, that will be a little more manageable if that does occur, rather than the entire $500,000 expense.
Well, that is not a new learning for any of us. We knew that in 2012, that that turf was gonna need to be replaced. So all these unmet needs were there. And I won't go into yet, we gave money back. But nonetheless, we knew these costs and expenses were gonna be there.
Yeah, that was one of those things where we had the long list of unmet needs, but as the needs become more critical, they need to be added in, and then we try to adjust. It's just, at this point, there's not a lot of other areas to reduce. So now they're just being added because we're kind of in a spot where there's not a lot of other places to reduce in order to add something that becomes a necessity versus an unmet need. So that at least has been, we have some dollars in there, 100,000 over So, that at least has been, we have some dollars in there, $100,000 over the 17 to 20 for at least the majority of that cost. And I do know there is a turf fund, where, which right now, I think it has about $60,000 in it, $58,000 to $60,000. They put little amounts in there every year, so hopefully by the time that happens, maybe it'll be closer to 100, and that will offset another $100,000 of that cost. For capital outlay, oh, that is where I'm at, sorry, capital outlay. Again, another thing I always like to say, just to make it clear, so I can't, I don't misinform people, but there are a lot, a very good amount of unmet needs that we have capital wise. I don't know how John does it sometimes, because it's basically where you have to come up with a budget, and you have to come up with your capital needs that you believe, and then we have the board approve that capital needs budget. But there's so many things that need to be addressed, that are kind of hanging on by a thread, that you just kind of hope every day that you can juggle them all and, and kind of prioritize what's the, the most urgent out of those items. So, I do want to make sure I make it clear that there are several, and I've got a list, and John created a list that was in the back of the October forecast that I still have, and we've crossed a couple of things off of it, but not many. There's a lot of technology needs, there's a lot of building, just, you know, capital needs, envelope issue needs, that paving, all kinds of things.
Questions?
Yes, we're actually struggling on buses. We're trying to do these bus leases. We have currently two bus leases that the buses may already be retired at this point, but we still owe on them for another 15 years, because they were financed for 30, one was financed for 28 years, and one was financed for 30 years. So, we still have those payments that we're making, but the buses are no longer, you know, on the road. So, we're kind of just left with trying to scoot along. I know Jamie had asked a question before about, you know, to save on the interest a little bit, could we pay something in cash? And unfortunately, the way the district has gone for such a long period of time is every single thing, from phones to laptops to computers, everything is financed. So, we don't, doesn't free up a lot of, of, of capital to just pay cash for things, because we have so many...
Why would you take out a 15 year lease on a bus unless, unless maybe you were going to buy out the lease?
Well, first of all, they don't let you do it anymore. That was the OASBO bus pools that were here a long time ago. It was, one was in 2004, one was in 2006, I believe. Buses last maybe 10 years if you're lucky.
But the lease purchases, we've done them up to five years?
The lease purchases we've done has been, yeah, no, no more than five. You want to at least have the loan paid off with at least five more years, so you can be on a cycle. And that's what we're trying to do, is get on some sort of a cycle. So, no, we are definitely need more buses, but I think we're at 10, is that 10 with the, with the new bus lease? So, basically, $215,000 for four years is going to get us 10 buses. So, it's, it's expensive.
Well, the hard part with buses is, a lot of people think, well, just fix them, keep them on the road. But when the highway state patrol comes in, they sideline these buses, we may think they look great, but if there's certain criteria that they follow, they can sideline a bus, it doesn't matter how much money we put into it.
Have they done that?
Oh, they haven't done that.
Okay.
Except for the one that worked out. Yeah, except for the one that worked out, but they have that built.
Nobody was on it.
They should have done that one.
How many buses do we have?
We have, we have 16, 16 route buses that run every day, and then we've got about 15 spare. And those spares are on the road pretty much every day, because they're either in service for a bus that's being serviced, or field trips, other things that, that aren't on the normal route. But, so we've got about 75 buses on any given day, valid at any given time.
This will be interesting, what's our oldest bus on the road?
Uh...
I think it was 93.
Yeah, 94, right?
Last year when I asked, it was 93, and I said, that was the year I graduated high school. This bus is still on the road.
None of the buses can, can see the road to the floor.
Oh, goodness.
Except maybe the one we had down there at Turf Creek with the sign on it, but that one's not a route bus, that's just a...
That's a stationary bus.
It's a stationary bus.
That was our Flintstone bus.
Yeah.
All right, you can go to the next page, it's the intergovernmental...
Here.
Yes.
I think, though, what we're seeing here, just like what we're talking about with the buses, and I think that you guys, you attended many committees, this is early in, in, you guys attended many meetings with me, committee meetings, and what we saw is we were putting Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid on so many things. It wasn't just the buses. So, what we're dealing with now in the budget is fixing all these Band-Aids. And so, it's costly, and unfortunately, I mean, luckily, I, I'm glad, not luckily, but I'm glad that we're going in here and fixing it, because like, it, it doesn't make sense to find something for 15 years. And there's many things that we were doing, that it's costing us more money in doing it that way. So, now we're coming in here and fixing it, but it's going to take money, and it takes time to go in here and fix these things.
World of duct tape, Band-Aid, easy to fix, it's like, a whole world with duct tape.
But, at the time, I remember sitting back there and us talking, saying, it's, it's just putting a Band-Aid on it. I don't understand how this is a long-term fix. It seems like in five years, we're going to have problems with this. And now we're sitting here in five years, having problems with this. So, here we are.
Yeah, and then it's, and it's, it's kind of a long process, like you said, because we can't fix everything. So, I feel like we're, we're, we're fixing a little and, and still putting a Band-Aid on most of it. Because I feel like we're still not getting where we need to be, but we're trying, I mean, we're, we're at least making a good effort in putting everything we can, can put in with the revenue that we have allotted, but that's not answering all of the problems. And I, you know, so it, it is a little stressful, I'm sure, for all of us, just hoping that nothing catastrophic happens, because our budget's so tight, so tight, that anything major that happens, we just, we don't have the, you know, the set aside, basically, you know, that's really going to help us in those emergency needs, so...
But yet, when, like when we sat through budget, and you guys were talking about, like what we could still add, and the fact that we're adding STEM labs, the fact that we figured out how to add the instructional coaches, that's what's cool, is we're still doing what's best for kids without comprom, you know, we're not compromising what's best for kids, but we're still figuring out how to take care of the issues within the district. So, kudos to you guys for doing that. I'm not doing it, you're doing it. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. The intergovernmental debt, that is basically, like I was talking about, our OASBO bus pools, the curriculum module, computer leases, copiers, those, that's where all of those are paid. That hasn't changed anything from October, because they're set, they're set items, so the, the costs are the same each year. The next page is the other object section. That's basically the auditor and treasurers fees. That's the fees that the county auditor charges us to collect and disperse the tax revenue to the school district. Those fees, those fees also are pretty stagnant. I mean, as they have delinquencies here and there, you know, they charge us extra to, you know, work on those delinquencies, but really, we collect at about 100%. Sometimes even a little over, they collect some prior year delinquencies. So, we don't have much variance in those costs. It is a statute, so we do have slight inflation built into that, because as the statute affords them to charge a little more, then we get charged more. So, there's a little bit of, like I said, inflation for those charges, but they stay pretty stagnant. The next one is the total other financing. This one always stays pretty much the same since the last several years. This is a $355,000 transfer that the board does to help subsidize the athletic count to make, you know, so that they can meet their contractual obligations. This, the big hike for this year is obviously that the board approved last month, that $584,000 to be transferred over to the permanent improvement fund, to pay for some of those extra energy conservation needs that we had in order to, to finish up that whole process. So, otherwise, that's always going to remain the same, around $355,000. You can see little, slight little differences in like 15, 14, 13. Those are the pay to participate reimbursement hours. So, what happens with that is, is the athletic department pays for that, but then we have to transfer from the general fund over to the athletics to pay, to make them whole, so to speak, for those pay to participate reimbursement hours. That's why there are a little bit of dollars here and there for those. But otherwise, it stays pretty, pretty stagnant. And then I think that's, yeah, okay, on mine, this is kind of what I wanted to show you. It's, it's a comparison, it's a comparison based from, and you guys don't have this part in your packet. This is a comparison from the October forecast as presented, and then the forecast presented now, so that you can kind of see the dollar difference and the percentage difference and the changes. So, obviously, you can see the major difference is the increase in tax revenue that we received from going from 6% anticipated revenue increase to the 10.1. So, that's the largest change there. If you look at the bottom on the total expenditures, that's actually .2 of 1%. So, we are very close expenditure wise. You can obviously, some of the things have gone up and down, but that basically shows that our management team, basically, as things come about that are, are kind of outside what our budget was, we're able to kind of go back through, at, still right now, even though we're very slim, slim, and we have a very tight budget, we are still able to go back and make other decisions to say, okay, this just came up, so let's not do this, and because we have to pay for this. So, that's how, even with all of the changes, we have been able to stay very close to what we projected in October.
So, I mean, we were within $120,000, or $120,000 less than what we thought.
No, our total expenditures are $120,000 different than what I projected in October.
Wow.
Yes.
That's even with the things, like we talked about, the energy.
Yes, you can see right there, the, the non-operating expenditures.
Yep.
How big that went up. But with the other, like, basically, our budget has ran under pretty much all year. A lot of that's due to our, you know, we've made a push to have our sub-costs different. One of the things that really saved, I believe, a lot of money is where Lee had the calendars changed for all of her IEP meetings, where they were, we were having to pay a lot more out for those accommodations of, of after-work hours and things like that, where now they have them done during the work hours, it's getting them all done on one day. That's actually saved a good deal of money. I have yet to get a full year of it, because I want to kind of wait till it's over, but it's, it's definitely saved a lot. But those types of decisions are what save money in other areas. So, when we have overages in other areas that we can't help, that at least helps offset it. Another one of the big things is the, is the revenue piece. As we're able to, you know, get a large increase on our catastrophic cost reimbursements, think those types of, you know, efforts help give us more revenue, which helps us then maintain some of that, the deficit in our revenue. So, that, every little bit helps, and it's, it's, it's awesome, at least, to work with people who definitely are, are very passionate about trying to save everything they can so that they can do what's right for kids. And that's, it's, it's a great thing to see. So, I really appreciate everybody's efforts here, because they really all work very hard. And then, I wanted to show you one other page. Most of this stuff is in, yeah, that's the five-year forecast, I guess you probably want to see that. If you go down to the bottom, basically, this end of this fiscal year, we're expecting to have 7.7 million. It might be slightly higher. I didn't want to take it all the way down to exactly what I thought, I wanted to, June is usually a pretty tough month, because all kinds of bills come in for things that you're like, what's this? So, I, I always like to leave a little bit, just in case we have some unexpected overages, but it should come in fairly close to that 7.7. So, as you can see, each fiscal year, we decrease, because our revenue is not enough, our expenditures exceed the revenue. So, basically, in 2020, right now, we're projecting a $30,000 deficit. I mean, that's not a huge deficit, but I think the main thing to, to be watchful for is, you, you have what's called your highest month expenditures, or 10% of your general fund budget. That's supposed to be a good indicator to tell you, how can I operate? I can't operate if my largest month of expenditures is around $5 million, and I have $3.6 million ending that next school year. So, what happens in July of the next year, July 1, I'm not getting tax revenue yet. There's no tax revenue coming in until mid to the end of July. So, what happens if I have a three payroll month? Or I have, you know, a whole bunch of bills, other bills coming in as, as, basically during the summer, they do all their ordering for the next year, and we get a ton of bills in in July and August. So, if I only have 3.6 million, I've got to do possibly three payrolls, and then pay all of our other bills. You, you don't have the money, no money's coming in yet. So, it's a big trigger for you to always make sure, and at the end of any fiscal year, you have enough money for at least one month to get to pay all your expenditures before you're expecting tax revenue to run, to run in. So, basically, for me, that tells me, right there in fiscal 18, 5,361,000. That rate now is about our benchmark. You can see the benchmark on the next page, I believe. See there on the next page? Yeah, uh, right there. So, we're looking at 18. So, fiscal 18, your highest month expenditures is 5,233. So, we're about $100,000 over that benchmark, which means in 19 and 20, that's, that's, that's going to be an issue. That's going to be tough to meet our contractual obligations in those two years. In addition, it's, it's important to also know that fiscal 19 and 20, you know, there, those expenditures could change if certain things occur, say with, you know, the negotiation process, or if other things occur, those amounts of money will be a lot lower.
Can you go back to the last bottom-line page? So, since I've been here four years, and everyone knows what I'm going to chime in about, we had a very healthy cash balance, because we hear about that constantly. So, if you look at each of these years, from what we've talked about tonight, you could add 1.5 million each year, plus $400,000 of what they thought was going to come in. So, what is it, 1.5, five years?
1.9.
So, like, seven and a half million dollars?
I have a...
Plus 2 millions, 9.5 million here. So, with that, if that 9.5 million were there, we would not be concerned about paying teachers, we would not be concerned about STEM labs, we would not need any money, period. We could have gotten way out to here before we even needed to have the discussion. So, that saves probably a hundred dollars a year on the average taxpayer, plus now on new money, we don't get to roll back from the homestead. So, clearly, if the money were there that we had, we would not have this deficit running or needing a levy right here. Basically, is what it says.
I did want to mess it up, but I wanted to look at my, see if I could find my mouse, if I did. It won't pull up my things. I was going to show you guys if I could, but when I get onto these, they reorganize all of my, it reorganizes all my icons. I actually have, I actually have a, I did that for you last year. I have an actual cash balance, I believe it's 8,842,000 in 2020, if I had added that renewal levy back in. And I think another thing that's important too, is the deficit spending piece. I know it's always, you know, the deficit spending, the deficit spending, but if you look up, 610,000 in this fiscal year would be our deficit spending amount. If we had an extra 1.3 million, we would not have been deficit spending, nor would we have been deficit spending there, or even there, because we would have had surplus for those two years, we would, so basically, we wouldn't have been deficit spending there. It, it would have, we would have started eventually deficit spending, but we would have had a lot healthier, as I said, 8,842,000 is I, is I believe what the number was there. So, yeah, we, it, we wouldn't have lost that, we would have definitely not been anywhere near where we are at right now, but...
So, then Tara, some people will say, well, then just get back to 1.3 million. The issue is, is we've lost it each year. So, just getting back to 1.3 million doesn't catch you up to what you've lost in the past years. That's where more than 1.5 million would be needed.
Right.
Is that accurate?
That's absolutely accurate.
So, all in my reading script, we're about this balance that has us at the 30,000 deficit 2020, it's about a million dollars roughly better than...
Yes, than the previous forecast. So, basically, we had almost 3 million in increased revenue total from the, like, for the real estate tax alone, over the whole forecast period, but we've also added other expenditures in there and things, so, you know, things that we were able to finally allot for because of that increased revenue, but it still didn't even kind of take a notch out of all the things that we, we need to put in there, but it at least afforded us the possibility to put some of them in there. But yes. It does look better than October, so I guess that's, that's good.
But, you know, I don't... Said, in addition to the tax revenue, the state portion comes down. But in addition to the tax revenue, the state portion comes down.
Yeah, the state portion comes down, yeah, absolutely. Now, it didn't come down at the rate that the other one did. We lost about, you know, close to a million, but we received almost three million more in tax revenue. So we're still to the good, but yes.
There's still a pickup on the revenue side.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, and you hear my frustration when I talk about the one point five million. A lot of reasons is when I took this job, I don't like running levers. I wouldn't work in a district where I, as a superintendent, where I had to have a levy cycle. We could not run this budget that way. We could have probably gotten close to the end of my career before this district even needed a levy on where we were at financially. So that's where the frustration comes from because we budget like an actual business budget on how much we're going to spend. Tara doesn't do it to where, oh, this year, let's, let's run three percent over. It's more of, here's what we need. So it's a very strict budgeting process. So for a lot of things we're doing, like the catastrophic cost, the reason we get a lot of that is a lot of districts don't do it. So it's things like that that makes that a little bit frustrating because to have to go out and have that discussion of perhaps we're going to need a new month. I think it puts certain groups as tired when they shouldn't. So it's extremely frustrating.
Can you say from the community? Thank you, Tara. Do you want a break?
John's the best talker.
He better be.
He's got a bunch on here, dude. Mr. Pedel?
Your bus lease is.
You just make me, you make me.
All right, we'll move on then.
All righty, real quickly, the bus lease, we've talked a lot about that. What we did is we had some buses scheduled for purchase this year and then each of the next several years to help the budget out overall. We decided to go with another lease, so we're buying more buses this year. We didn't buy them in January like we normally do. We put it off till the summer so it'll hit the next fiscal year. So we're buying ten buses. We're leasing them. It is a four-year lease, so it's actually a year less than what we've been thinking about doing. The other good piece is the interest rate is somewhere less than three percent to do the lease. So it's over the four years, it's about thirty thousand dollars extra to lease the buses. So they're both, they're bluebirds, they're just like the ones we always get, so they're good buses and they'll last a good ten, fifteen years.
And since that's a lease, you don't have to take that out for bid, correct?
Correct. Any questions?
These are just replacing buses?
Correct. We've got five right now buses. That's why I said we've got eighty buses on our property, seventy-five are useful. The other five are waiting for, to be done. And then we've got another five that will retire after those. They're getting tired. It's, you know, the, the cost goes up exponentially once you get past the certain percent of mileage and age that the cost just triple on you to keep them on the road. It's just not worth it in that way. Correct.
So we're not going to, adding these ten means from a net perspective, you expect we're not going to really pick up probably any against that?
We're not picking up any, correct.
Yeah, we're not going to be adding a third tier of bus.
Not anytime soon.
No, I mean, I'd say at some point, we're going to have to have that conversation.
Correct, definitely.
You know, because obviously I think we hear a lot of concern, particularly, you know, at the degree.
Yeah, we have fifty minute buses.
Oh, yeah, they're long.
I think at some point, we're going to have to have that conversation. I'd be interested to see what it would take to. Sure, it's a big number.
Fifteen buses.
Seventeen buses.
Seventeen buses.
Seventeen buses.
Seventeen buses at ninety thousand dollars a bus plus the salary of the bus driver.
Yep. I mean, that's without, that's without, I mean, there may be a bus or two that we could eliminate, but I mean, it literally is seventeen buses when you look at the general without, you know, cramming things in and all that.
That would be so that the district would have their own dedicated buses and they wouldn't be.
Correct. There, I mean, we'd probably have, we'd probably, we'd probably put a fourth, right now, we have three tiers of transportation. We'd probably put a fourth tier in there to be able to run certain buses at the same time so that we're not, so that we're not extending out the school day, but.
Two point two, two point three million dollars total cost for seven.
When you put the sal driver, the salaries in.
Yep. And the other hard part, I'm just going to tell you to that, even if you did it, finding the drivers to do it. I mean, we are, we are struggling as well as every other school district I know to find enough drivers, sub-drivers, daily route drivers. I mean, we have very few sub-drivers. Our, our mechanics and, and transportation folks are on the buses all the time. So because it's just hard to get subs and drivers to take those places. It's a tough job. It's one I don't want to do.
Do we not have enough team drivers that it really impacts the number of buses we send out? Like it's.
We have, believe it or not, this year, our high school, our students that are at the high school level are more driver, more riders than we've had in the last five years.
Really?
For high school, yes.
Really?
Even at the end of the year. But if you notice a lot, you know, we had, we, we took away, you know, one of the teacher lot here and made it a student lot and we're already down at the very bottom with only about forty, fifty spaces left.
So there are still spaces left though?
Correct. But, you know, next year, it'll be, you'll have the most amount of high school kids in the high school for the, really the next four years. The high school will be right around two thousand. So I, those will all be used, I think, in the next, the next four years.
We'll get to where we just don't pass out any more partners.
Right. Well, and that's what, up until this year, they had been running out every year, but this year, we were able to make it through the whole year.
The discussion then will be, why can't we provide more payment? It's too expensive.
But we're not reducing buses clearly because we're still having enough riders, you're saying?
Correct, right.
Okay.
The next one, three point five, we will be bringing back for a vote at the next board meeting, a renewal of our property fleet liability insurance that comes as a package. They've negotiated and this year, we should see an eight point one percent decrease in our insurance rates. We've been doing a lot to try to mitigate some of the, you know, losses we've had over the long term. In addition, part of that reduction, two percent of it, or yeah, about two percent of that reduction is the, you know, the tearing down Jonathan Wright. So that, you know, takes away from the, the overall cost of, of the property insurance and that, that is two percent. So we're having a six percent decrease, which is good because we've seen some pretty big increases over the last couple of years because of our loss ratios, but we've got that under control and we're, we're looking better for that. So that'll come back. That is, that is actually through Wade Insurance. That's who we purchased. We actually have a broker that works through this with other companies to get the lowest rates and, and we're sticking with Wade again this year. That'll be my recommendation. The next board meeting. Food service update, every year, we give you a food service update. The usage this year is almost exactly what it was this year in terms of percentage wise, about the same number of kids are buying in each building that bought last year and are, we, we've got a little bit more reimbursement back from the federal government, so we should end the year a little bit better than we ended last year, except for the fact that we'll be, well, yeah, because that won't come out. So we'll end the year a little bit better. We started the year with about eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We're going to end the year just a little bit better than that. Now, we did, you know, you all approved the addition, the changes to the walk-in coolers and freezers that here in the, in the high school. So that'll reduce that a little bit. But Kathy Poor is doing a great job. She's getting great, her visits from the state are going outstanding. She's not getting any write-ups from them. It's outstanding. She's getting, I mean, they're, you know, I don't, I'm not there every day, but I'm hearing a lot of good things about what's being served and what the kids are eating, some stuff that they actually want to eat in the lecture. As much as you can in a school lecture. Any questions about that? Last thing for me is the, a few years ago, when we went with Forward Edge, we kept one of our technology people, Emily Geisel, and we changed her job description from, from basically being a technician to being the go-between, the supervisor, basically between myself and Forward Edge. And she has really stepped up to the plate to do that. When we did that originally, we really wanted to make her a two sixty employee all year long, but she was just coming off having a baby and all this and she really didn't want to do a two sixty that, that time. But now that the baby's getting a little older, she's ready to move into a two sixty. I mean, basically, just like kind of the rest of us, we're all working two hundred and sixty days or more anyway, so she might as well reap the benefits of what you get from a two sixty. So at the next board meeting, my, my intent is to recommend her to go to a two sixty. So that would be an increase in pay for her just because we're adding days to her. Not, not any increase in terms of hourly or daily rate, but it's just because she'll be working another forty days a year instead of the two twenty.
And we're going to need it next year. We're looking at.
Everything's going.
Get new computers and phones and kids, we need someone that's there to control all that.
Okay, see, that's all I have. Zoom.
The, basically a work session, and I think we have it on for a vote tonight. This is our Ohio Athletics contract. If we're going to be in the leagues, our kids are going to play in sports, we have to agree to this particular contract. It's pretty much their standard contract. I can't say anything is majorly changed. I think one thing that the league and the athletic association is looking at more now than ever is concussions. I think through the NFL research, they're finding head trauma is more severe now than it's ever been. We've changed a lot of things in athletics and working with Miami Valley Hospital to make sure that we're providing the precautions we need for our students to avoid any further harm if they might encounter a concussion, which does happen, it certainly does. Also tonight, need to discuss in three point nine, a CCIP supplemental. Mrs. Floyd has got this the past three years. I realize out there in the world of criticism of me and my position, I just figure I would rather see Tara be paid eight thousand dollars to do the CCIP than ninety thousand through the ESC. So if someone to look at that as an additional expense, that's fine. But anytime we can spend eight thousand instead of ninety, I think it's a good deal. At this point, there's me and two critically for a district of six thousand. We don't have someone that will be able to do all of that themselves and have the expertise to do it. To hire someone that will know how to do that would be costly. Tara is, we still give Tara information off of this, but she spends the time getting it done, which a lot of times keeps her late in the evening getting that done, which rolls in the money to be able to pay for some of the things and some of these people that carry out these curricular functions for us. So I hope that you will consider granting her that supplemental for next year as well. I can't guarantee we're going to CCIP.
So that's one of the three supplementals that we okayed. We had one, right?
John had one, which is now in his contract. That wasn't a big pay.
So that was, so that was basically eight thousand.
It was.
For each of them and we were paying thousands and thousands from the ESC. So when people see that this is a supplemental, they need to understand that it's just an additional duty you guys have to perform. And we were paying, what'd you say, ninety thousand for it?
Well, John does the testing coordinator, which is now part of his job, which is eight thousand in the past. We actually pay a person, well, while I was principal, not while I was superintendent, I thought it was twenty-seven thousand dollars to be the testing coordinator. So that was back seven years ago. Then Lee had one for eight thousand, which is the school report coordinator for special needs students. The, that was thirty thousand dollars for us. Picked that back up this year. So just those two alone were sixty and we paid sixteen. The CCIP, basically the recommendation for the ESC is hire another curriculum person. So we can give the information to Tara, but plugging it in and calculating all of that and knowing where to go there to find all that stuff, that would be a whole nother person. So, I mean, you're looking at ninety and sixty is a hundred and fifty and we're spending twenty-four thousand.
So I hope this puts to rest the people who questioned.
It does.
The three supplementals that we have okayed to these three people, that it's a big savings and hopefully they won't hear any more about.
I don't think these three people really were seeking these additional responsibilities. They're doing this to help us out. So thank you to these three people. These are, this is a lot of extra work, so this is not, they weren't looking for an extra eight thousand dollars to get a lot of extra work. So this is, this is a help to the district, not a help to these three employees.
The reality of this, if we want to talk being transparent or being telling what we do, I could have just put those on a purchase service contract, which was here the four years before I got here. I get criticism from board members back then, but they voted for the ESC contract that paid the higher rate. So we've gotten the cheaper, interesting process, but the public never sees how much we pay for the ESC contract. When do you ever get criticized? So I, it is what it is.
You need to sit alone on that buddy bench.
I know. I sit on that buddy bench, nobody will sit next to me. Bring the buddy bench in here. I have the buddy bench, no one sits next to me.
Good, well.
She won't just sit on that bench, she's still, oh, no one sits next to me. Okay, three point ten, the school calendar. I, my apologies to you, we had this last week and we said, hey, everything's there. We had intended to change next year's calendar, so we never even thought about Veterans Day. Now that we've done further research, we actually are supposed to have school on Veterans Day. Since we're not starting the year later and keeping it as is, we need to have a in-service day for staff in September. We can't wait all the way until November. So the only change is instead of being off on Veterans Day, November eleventh, we will now go to school on November eleventh and be off on September third, which is a Friday. I think, and I appreciate Mr. DeRosa sending you guys a, a much more well-written understanding of that for having. So you got my one line from Siri. I spelled correctly when I sent it to you, but we basically forgot, so we need to make sure that's on their blueprint, the calendar for tonight.
Ms. Spencer?
Yes, three point eleven. I'd like to discuss a little bit about the suggestion that the administration from the district has when we look at our nursing staff. We are so very blessed to have a quality nurse, a RN, in each of our buildings. We have not had that all the time, but a couple of years ago, when they started the wellness program through the county with our EPC, there's a lot of incentives and things we do for our wellness and that's one of the additional services that we'd actually hired somebody to do. And a couple of years ago, when I came aboard in Human Resources, we kind of moved it from having an outside district office person to who could really manage all of the wellness within the buildings. And so Bronwyn Patterson, our nurse at SI, took that over as a supplemental. The thing that we are seeing now is we have quite a big increase in student needs across the district. For example, two years ago, we were, in previous years, we would send one nurse on our Washington DC trip. At this point, over half of our students take some sort of either over-the-counter medication, have medical needs such as diabetes, those kinds of things. But we now have to send two full-time nurses on those types of field trips. At five points, we have, we have four students in our special needs who actually have to have needs to fit. So are, those are just some of the things that we're seeing in every building that are increasing. So we looked at different alternatives and Bronwyn, one, we're having trouble finding any substitutes for nurses because when they go out, they can make three or four times as much money as subbing in our building. So what we are looking at proposing to the board is that we hire a part-time nurse that will fulfill several of the roles. She would help Bronwyn at SI, so that would help Bronwyn work with the nurses in all the other buildings. We would have a sub that we wouldn't have to, either the nurses either don't take her sick day or whatever when their kids are sick, or Bronwyn then shifts all of the nurses around to share out in the buildings. For example, SI and Clear Creek on the days that there's a nurse not at the junior high, then she sends Clear Creek to junior high and then she goes over and does Clear Creek and SI. So between looking at that and just the district nursing duties, we have been giving her an hour of overtime a day because she cannot get to all of those six buildings, manage all of the needs and everything with field trips and things that I've talked to about before, and also do the wellness. We have chronic waiver through the absentees, which we have over a hundred and fifty kids on chronic waivers, which means they're chronically sick for more than twenty days. So then they are getting this chronic waiver form so they don't have to go back to the doctor every time for the same types of symptoms that they have. She manages all of that. She's taken a great deal of time working in team meetings with both special needs students and families and these chronic waivers. And it's just, at this point, we just don't have enough hands to go around. So we are proposing that we hire a part-time, either morning or afternoon, person to come in and either be a sub, which is going to be, you know, relatively, we usually have maybe twenty, thirty days out of the year where our. maybe twenty, thirty days out of the year where our, our nurses are out, um, and also be able for her to go out to the other buildings and help those nurses and do her district, um, responsibilities for all the different things that goes under the district nurse. So really, she's, she does two roles, plus she does a lot of the management of a lot of the building, district, um, things. We are also looking at increasing her days instead of giving her the overtime, so when we increase her days from the, what, what is that, a hundred and, no, two-twenty to two-thirty?
No, it's two, two oh one.
Two oh one, four, two oh one. So we're increasing by twenty-nine days, but it'll compensate, because we're paying her anyway with overtime that she's needing to complete her duties. So that's what we will be asking you to vote on. Um, I don't know if we're voting on it tonight or the next one. So for next year, that's what we are proposing she do.
My question is this, so let's say Clear Creek, um, nurse cancels, you know, has a sick kid or whatever. Would the sub, would the part-time person fill in for the whole, like, would you still try to find a sub for that day?
No.
But no person's only there part-time, so would that Clear Creek only get a half-time sub that day?
We would, it would alleviate Bronwyn from having to leave SI and go to Clear Creek. And so the sub would go to SI, which is one of our smaller buildings, and that's why we have Bronwyn there, because she's at a smaller building, so she can, we thought she could manage both the district nurse things and have one of our smaller buildings. So at that point in time, we will have, we'll still be doing the switch, but it'll only be a part-time.
So would Bronwyn go to Clear Creek for half the day?
Yes.
And then the sub, or not the sub, the part-time person would be there for half the day? Okay. Okay. Cool. Thank you.
This is assumed that our five-year we just approved, this is after the?
Actually, I'm under the person.
I mean, our exposure line mentally is very strict, and it's, this is what I need to begin, and he's, you know, two, two feet, he's all kind of, so.
Yeah, well, it's, it's around twenty thousand, once we're ready.
When you net, Albert.
Yeah, and a large part of it is the cost of the subs that we do have to get from the ESC. Um, the hope, the hope is that should we have a float around the district so that we wouldn't have to do bringing the sub. That is a large part of the cost.
And she knows the district too, and how much she's gonna get to know the kids.
Knows the kids and their parents.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Discussion better business.
Sure.
Uh, hit break before we head into.
How do you do this?
Okay, five minutes.
No, fifteen's about what we're dealing with, right?
There, just on that.
Treasurer's report.
Uh, I've been told to give the short version here, so.
By your name?
No, apparently I gave, I apparently gave this life story of Springbrough schools in my.
My football brief.
I think you did a nice job.
He was texting me.
Is she ever gonna shut up? Okay, sorry about that. Um, okay, for April financials, I don't have much, um, to report that's exciting. A lot of it I did hit in the presentation that I gave, uh, my short presentation. Um, a couple of things I do wanna note, um, when you see this next month, um, after the five-year is approved, I will update the five-year forecast amounts for May, so these amounts will close down a lot more from where they are right now, because I have adjusted what is actually going to happen now since, um, we have some more information. So, right now, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is the variance for salaries, um, for, through April. That is due to the people I discussed that were on leave. We had several on leave, we had, um, a few resign, and the replacements are on purchase service right now. So that's why that is trending that way. Same with, um, benefits. Now, it's not trending as much as it's showing. It shows we're four-hundred-and-twenty thousand under budget, but we are getting ready to pay in May the workers' compensation for a hundred and eight thousand. So you will see on, like I said, um, when I do May's financials, that these numbers will be more in line since we will be able to adjust them, since those people are being paid by a purchase service, I'll be able to lower those.
Is that a typical amount per workers' comp?
Workers' comp, a hundred, it's actually a little lower than.
It's really low. We, our workers' comp is really good here, 'cause they, we, we keep, we keep it up, we keep the accident forms going, and we.
What type of thing are paying it up?
Um, any kind of workplace accident or?
We have, we have some.
And some of them are even long-term.
Long-term.
Things after the accident, you know, um, therapy, things like that. Um, just as an example, it was about three-hundred-and-eighty, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty to four-twenty in my previous district, so this is actually very low.
Yeah, yeah, it's very good.
Yeah, it's, it's very good.
You mean to tell me when I fell down the stairs ten years ago, I could have drawn workers' comp?
You should've filled out an accident report and then gone through the proper.
We were finally called to rub some dirt on it.
They told, they told me, 'cause I bounced.
Yeah.
Um, purchase service also is trending down, but it will, as you can see, we got the Jonathan rate, um, in April, ninety thousand was paid, and we're anticipating spending about a hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, um, in the month of May, so that amount will come down from that. So that amount will be a little bit more in line with what it should be. Supplies are.
On that demolition, should that be, should that cover everything?
Yes, yes.
Yes, that will be the last of the payments.
Right, there will be no, there'll be no additional charges for that, just that'll be everything.
So we still will be trending a little under as long as we don't get any surprises in May. And May will bill for items such as when, when kids are incarcerated at the JBC, we'll, we have open purchase orders of money we're anticipating, but we have no idea who's gonna go over there during the year and how much that tuition's gonna cost, and so those, those could be large depending on, um, increased issues with kids going over there, so, um, that's why we're, we're, I still kind of, instead of rolling it back completely in the, in the May update, I have left a little bit of a buffer in case we get some surprise bills in for those.
Still left in there is one.
I know, well, let's not come wet on that. Um, supplies and capital, they're very close. I mean, we're almost right on where we're supposed to be. Um, we're actually under budget as well, but those should probably even out. I, I still think for capital at least, we will be still under for the year. Um, but again, we still have some outstanding bills that, you know, haven't came in yet, so once those come in, we'll be able to more. But I have a line in the five-year to kind of show what we anticipate, so these will close in a little bit more. Um, the transfer out, obviously, that was an unexpected thing, that's why until the May forecast is approved, it wasn't in the May forecast, or in the October forecast, so that's why it shows a large variance of five-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand for the, um, transfers out, and that's the transfer the board approved to go over to PI to pay for those, um, energy conservation needs. Um, so obviously, when the May forecast comes, it'll show we're right on budget, but that's because I will have had to have revised it, because that happened since we approved the October forecast. The other in treasurer's fees, they show twenty-five thousand dollars over budget, that's not gonna happen. Um, right now, it's like that because the other in treasurer's fees came in this month for the second half of collections. So when you kinda go over to the, to the monthly estimate, it's, it's running about a fifty-two thousand dollar, you know, if you, if you divide it up by twelve months, it's about fifty-two thousand a month. But we've received ninety to ninety-five percent of our fees for the entire year once that second, um, the second half of the real estate taxes came in. So actually, we'll be under budget on that too, it just doesn't look like it at this point. So overall, we're doing really good. The five-year forecast for May, we anticipated forty-eight million, three-eighty-nine, eight-sixty-four. Um, I, the May forecast is forty-eight million, two-sixty-nine, eight-fifteen, so we're about a hundred-and-seventy-some thousand lower, so I'm gonna lower, and it still might come in a little bit lower than that, but like I said, I have a few things out there that I'm kinda buffering just in case we get any bills in, um, for the rest of the year. So, nothing too exciting, it's, it's right on, kinda how, how it's been trending. Oh, and then, sorry, I forgot where to go, the next one. Um, the next one is approval for a donation of six-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars for the Springbrough Touchdown Club. Um, that is, I think, to go for the second-floor turf improvements at the EduCare Building. Um, the next one is a thousand and sixty-nine, twenty-two from the Springbrough Athletic Boosters for boys baseball, girls softball, boys tennis, and girls and boys track. And then, the next one is.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
You might be over into this. What's the difference, I, I know what the boosters is, what's the difference between the touchdown club and boosters and how they work, and is it just as football?
Booster, yeah, boosters works for all the athletic programs. We have, for football, we have the mothers' club and the touchdown club, which is the, uh, the fathers that do fundraising and stuff like that, um, just for the football teams.
So football can actually get money from the boosters, from the moms of the touch, the moms of the football.
Yeah, they, to be honest, they don't give as much, obviously, from the boosters, because they are able to take care of a lot of what they need and stuff. Like through the rotation of uniforms, um, the fundraising that the team has done, the malt sale.
So the malt sale is through this and not through the boosters?
Right, it's a football fundraiser, right. They also have a lift-a-thon every year that they raise huge amounts of money.
I've heard of that.
No, this, it's all done with football to offset that cost of, you know, to help out there. Mothers' club started way back in, in mid-eighties probably, when, you know, Bruce Snuff was still a teacher, and it was a small group back then that raised funds and stuff to help out, you know, it's just from.
I thought there was a separate club, I thought it was just the football people under the umbrella of the boosters. Is that what it is? Are they like a five-one, three?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll, need a motion to accept the items four-one through three?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes. Superintendent, two-four.
Now, five-point-one is the approval of fees, which we went over at the last board meeting. Five-point-two is the approval of the resolution for our Ohio Athletic Association, and five-point-three is approval of the revised school calendar for the next school year.
Question, let me go, okay. We have a motion to approve items five-one through five-three?
So moved.
Second. Second. All right. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes. Director of Human Resources, Lee?
Yes, sir. Um, for the superintendent's office, six-point-one is approval of personnel items as presented. As you can see on the log list, it is that time of year where I'll review, um, contracts, so I, we will be looking tonight to have items one through one-fifty-one approved this evening. Um, other than contract renewals, we also have summer school approvals, and we also have classified substitutes and some athletic health contact. Item six-point-two is approval of the continuing contract for Jill Moody. She is our intervention specialist at Springbrough Junior High and our current team leader. Six-point-three, approval of continuing contract for Morgan Gomez. She is our speech pathologist, um, for the district, currently residing at Five Points. Six-point-four is approval of continuing contract for Amy Carrato. She is a preschool intervention, uh, specialist at Clear Creek. We, six-point-five, approval of continuing contract for Crystal Rapid. She is also at Clear Creek as a preschool intervention specialist. Six-point-six, we are asking your approval to create that point-five clinic nurse position. Six-point-seven is to approve the increased contract days for the district nurse. And six-point-eight is the approval to reduce in the fourth position our part-time at, um, the computer lab teachers, second and third grade, that are going to be splitting buildings now because they, um, they share that position, and it is going to allow for our new STEM position in fourth and fifth grade that you approved, um, a couple of months ago.
So the teachers were able to get a job elsewhere, we just reduced that position?
That is correct. Um, so tonight, six-point-nine is approval of item six-point-one through six-point-eight.
Did we have the supplemental for the CCIP on, in that, by any chance?
No.
That wasn't, it was, it's not in the report, no.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to have more questions about whether or not Tara gets a supplemental for the CCIP, or, two, we can table it otherwise, I'd like to have India Jim to add it, let's get that taken care of. Some work to do.
We're already doing it, but.
We would be doing it if we don't, she's, she probably already got it.
I've already got it set up for next year, but I, I can add it to the agenda if you guys want to.
So you can make a motion?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to?
And then, and then the agenda.
The agenda?
To add, to add the approval.
CCIP?
Mm-hmm, to add the free health.
So moved. Thanks.
Okay. Roll call, Stupi?
But are we gonna okay now, or just okay with all together?
We're just gonna vote on this.
Okay, the adding.
Yeah. Um, Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes.
So then, now we'll have six-point-ten, but that'll be approval of six-point-one through six-point-nine.
Six-point-one through six-point-nine. Okay, and then, so, you wanna just use the same ones? Or you wanna get new?
Yeah, is there a motion to accept six-one to six? Okay.
For the continuing contract, how long is that contract for then?
It will depend. It says on it, it should either be a one-year or a two-year for the continuing contract.
But the continuing, what is continuing meaning?
That means that every three years.
Three years.
There will be, um, observation.
So it's a three-year, yes. Okay, thank you. That was it.
Well, the contract, no, the contracts.
It's for the evaluation, they're evaluated. The contract is continuing, so they don't ever come back to a one-year or a two-year.
Right, right.
Right. So are they only evaluated every three years then?
Well, with, in the old system, it was every three years. Now that we have OTES, we have on-cycle and off-cycle. So they will be off-cycle for two, on-cycle for one. So the OTES actual whole rubric that they do is every three years, the other two, we, Springbrough has created an off-year, um, less intensive, um, evaluation that they will do for two.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, I was at, thanks.
Where am I? Um, is there a motion to accept those items six-one through six-nine now, right?
So moved.
Second. Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fab?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Flan?
Yes.
Stupi?
Yes. Board member comments and questions, Dr. Lunt?
Um, I don't think I have a whole lot. Uh, it, uh, just wanted, you know, to say thanks to everyone who took care of all the, you know, bomb threat issues, all these other evacuation issues. You know, I've got many kids in the district, and I appreciate the, the attention to detail and the care for the kids, and the safety is important for each and every one. So, you know, it is inconvenient, it's a hassle, it causes all kinds of issues, but it's what's needed, and I'm glad it happened.
Okay, yeah, I guess I would echo Dr. Lunt's statements that, uh, just appreciate everybody's effort, and it's been, uh, a couple of interesting weeks. Um, but I guess, you know, as we're wrapping up or getting close to the end of this school year, I guess I just wanted to take the time to thank everybody, you know, all of our staff, our teachers, and administration, and, you know, I think, um, despite some of those hiccups, it's been a, it's been a very positive year, and I'm really excited to, uh, as we get into the summer, we continue to work through some of the goal-setting work, you know, to really sort of map out, um, you know, the, all of the positive changes we'd like to sort of drive through the district as we look forward to next year. I really think this last year, I mean, has been a, has been a good one. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank everybody for, for all of their hard work.
Lisa?
Along the same lines, um, what I see in the staff is people doing, and I was forwarded an email, and it was something that, um, Ms. Vincent had said, was, "We're here for kids, and what we're gonna do is for kids." And that's what I see, especially in the month of May. Um, it is a crazy, crazy month for everybody, for administration, for teachers, for absolutely every, for people cutting the lawn when it's raining and the dandelions are growing. It's a crazy month for absolutely everybody. But the cool thing is, everybody is here for kids, and they're gonna do what's best for kids.
So, just an appreciation for that, because it means it's for parents. It's a hard month for parents, because our kids are in the middle of all of that too. So, just, I appreciate everybody and take going 110% to make it a great end of the school year. And also to the parents that did everything for the teachers and the staff last week. It was an amazing week to see the different groups, because I have kids in different buildings, I was able to participate and do different things, and to see the PTOs put together the different things for the teachers and the staff. It was really a cool thing, and to see the, it was usually moms, so I'm going to say moms, wasn't always, but to see the moms come together and get creative, and like here, we did these pazook, pazook?
Pazukis?
Pazukis, no, bazookis, bazookis, like what you get at BJ's Restaurant. I mean, just amazing creativity, but they wanted to make sure the teachers knew how much we appreciate them. So, it's five cookies with ice cream on top. It was a little oven.
That's not fun.
No. So, it was just cool. I think that's one way that the parents are able to show the teachers, just a very tangible way of what, that we appreciate them. So, thank you to the parents out there that really did a great job of letting the teachers and the staff know that we appreciate them. That's it. Nice and short. Yeah, sure.
Charles, you don't want to say anything.
No, I'm a grandparent, so I don't. But just thanks to everybody. It was a trying couple of weeks, and I know for these two people over here, it was a trying week, as well as the administrators and the building principals, so, but you got to do what's right for kids, and I'm just sorry that some of the programs were, had to be omitted, and people with inconvenience, that, that's the shame of it for individuals and stuff. But, it is what it is. We just do the best we can.
Just wanted to thank again Ms. Johnson and Rachel's challenge from Clear Creek, and echo what everybody else has been saying. I don't think you need to worry about where we stand when stuff like that happens. You are back in weight and take care of our kids, and, you know, we back you all the way there, so.
If I could make a couple of comments, I just wanted to thank our county prosecutor, David Cornshell, our human al judge, Judge Kirby. I was able to meet with both of them this week, and it's nice that people who are at the top of the justice system, their focus is getting kids out that make threats or make poor choices. And, you know, you've seen police presence at our buildings over the past week. The chief and I were able to talk, have some good discussions, and it's not that our kids are in any imminent danger, but just with the increased threat that the chief felt necessary to put a police officer on site, which I thought was great. So, I know I've stopped by and thanked the police officers for being there. They basically did a lot of their work while they were sitting there, and just were there in case we needed them. But a lot of parents ask, "Well, why are they there?" No particular reason, but it's just good to have a presence. The kids need to understand, "I hate it when they get in trouble," and we have to push those things, because kids make mistakes. But right now, these threats are huge, life-lasting mistakes, and luckily, things calm down quickly in Springbrough.